I'll skip that night.
I would just be real dead for it since we're in.
The point twenty sixteen of Kent Board of Caning.
I'm making motion point Toby Walker.
I told you to be fast Toby.
Oh yeah. All favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I don't know.
Wait this for. Yeah, I'm opposed too sometime.
I have an eye for you.
I heard that.
And on tape on the orange pages, that beginning is on the back of that.
I don't get stuff apart as much.
I know, that is my fingers, so I don't think anybody puts my swabs on their paper, so that's not even a thing.
Thank you dear, you're so nice today, you just start to say so nice.
I'm so sorry.
I am right on you and the officer made me and said that you were getting us a catalog.
Yeah.
And then Valerie went, I don't think you brought it, it was not me.
See, I know we ordered out this catalog before, but Heather and I had this debate.
Uh-oh.
And she was like, I've never ordered out that catalog, and I'm like, why do we have this big catalog still?
Throw it away.
I'm going for the. Zachary says. All in favor?
Aye.
You gotta just tie it to me.
Plan it, just right. The ceiling guy has got almost all the ceiling tiles up in the third floor. If you guys want to go look at the finished room, go upstairs and look at the courtroom, it looks awesome. He's got up on the third floor, he's in the jury room, the conference room right now, and then in the, uh, in Lori's office. He's still gotta do the small pieces where the wiring, phone lines and stuff are coming down, he's still gonna cut around those. But the courtroom wall looks good. There's a crew up on the roof building that catwalk or closing, enclosing in that area where the two units are mounted in between the areas. They're putting expanded metal and frame up there where we can stand on that, Lori can stand on that to change the filters on that. In one of the dog houses, one of the enclosures that they had, I don't know how it happened, whatever happened, but somebody hit it and caused a hole, so I don't, I don't know. Just gonna take a piece of metal, sheet metal, and put over the top of that, because that water gets in there, it's gonna leak right down into the chases. And that's the one right there by the courtroom. Electricians will be back this weekend to do some of their work, some more of their work. As I said last week, the generator's hooked up, but we're just waiting for the guy to come and do the startup. We can't do nothing with it until he comes in and starts it up. Now, the other one's not attached, it's not tied into it yet. The fuel line's ran, but it's not hooked up yet. So, if something did happen in the meantime, we'd just have to have a diesel truck or something come and put fuel into the main one. It's like a hundred and ninety-five gallons.
Uh, they pulled it up, they're not pulling us?
Yeah, but he came back and filled it up. He came back, he called and said, asked me, and I said yes, and he came back and filled it up.
Oh, I mean, if we get, if we have to use it, then they'll have to come back and fill it up?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, I was changing the page.
There's a few of the window heat pumps that are having little, little issues, but they're coming back and fixing those as, as needed. As far as my communication, we're waiting on Ken Oakland to come in and run fiber from the building, ATT building over here to here, of no charge, or run it from here to here. And then they're gonna run it in the basement, so I will have my own network for that, for the communications to the system. And that's gonna be forty gigs at, I think, eighty dollars a month for that. For the internet and my own provider for the system. We'll meet with Guernsey Wednesday, so it's one, ten thirty. So twenty-three, because I'm gonna say something Wednesday about the chases and some other issues that I see before we do the final punch list, because they're, they're getting close to being done. And we really can't test anything, they don't wanna test anything on the air conditioner side until weather permits. I'm gonna try to test the air conditioner right now until probably we start using it.
If you see Cory, I might remind him again about that one plug-in.
Yes, that's on his, that's on his checklist, remove that plug right there by Kathy's desk, is that the one you're talking about? Yes, that's on his checklist, because he has some stuff.
Donna's office that they're.
Yeah, he's got Donna's office and and your office, and if anything else, because we're waiting on, they had to reorder some, some lights. Because the ones that were shipped, there were some broken ones. And when they shipped them, they didn't actually add enough. They shipped, I think, just the amount, they didn't ship any extra, so they have to get some extra. Because there's one missing up in Lori's office, and then there's two down in Donna's office. And I think that's all that the lights are missing. I called Silver Cliff today for the third time about the parking in the drive. Because they, they should be coming fixing that to where we can open that all the way back up.
The alley.
The alleyway, yeah. And then, and at the same time, they're supposed to be fixing that third street. They're supposed to be fixing third street. I've had a couple calls from the city a couple times about it, and I said, well, it shows that they're supposed to fix that. And they were told, I was told that they were supposed to fix that, because they tore it up when they went. Other than that, I think everyone has heat, so that's, that's the main thing. Because I know what was getting, kind of painted the rear. The light at the end of the tunnel was really close. But like I said, we meet with Guernsey Wednesday, ten thirty.
Mark had said that he'd be here this Sunday, this week, doing the trim around the chases?
Yes.
But they're not gonna enclose those, those other ones into that chase, right, or doing around those?
Right.
Is that the same like those other pipes, can we paint those?
We can paint any of the pipes, but you're gonna have, what we're gonna do is we're gonna have to put a, like a kilz or some sort on there, because you're gonna have, those pipes are gonna produce moisture.
So do you want an oil base on those?
An oil base on those.
Do you think with the three, or is it four? Will a quart be enough, or do we need to go ahead and get a gallon of that oil base, of that color then?
I would just go with a quart, because, you know, not everyone's gonna paint the same color.
Right, right, yeah, it was me from my office, but I didn't know whether that quart would cover them all.
And see, yours, yours has no, no valves or anything in it. On yours, correct, there's no valves.
I thought the one by my desk had a valve at the top.
We can, and if you wanna enclose that, we can enclose that and then just put a little door there.
Oh, I don't mind just painting them, I just wanna make sure what kind of paint I need.
We can paint them, yeah, they don't have to be an oil-based paint, because if not, a water-based paint, that moisture's gonna cause that to chip off. And you're gonna, you're gonna be painting more than what it's worth. So, uh, the guy's supposed to be here at the end of this week, maybe next week, to finish the doors up in Lori's office where those three units are. Because we had to expand that because of the code. And so, that, that should be finished up, and then at the same time, he's putting those two new doors in. One in Lori's office and the other one down in Rick's office, and that one in Lori's office is coming off the courthouse security account.
Would that be on the front?
I will, yeah. I haven't had a PO yet, because I wanna know what the fine, what the price is before he sends me the, I mean, the cost of the doors and what it is, but he said he'd, he'd send me that this week, so I'll have POs made up this week for that. Other than that, there's nothing else. I did have an emergency come up last week on the jail.
The champagne?
No, one of the inmates had shoved apples down one of the commodes.
She doesn't like apples.
So, I don't know. So we had to shut that jail cell down and move everybody in until Tuesday when Lucky Bill came out. We found at least probably, what he's, what he's guessing, probably four apples down there. The fear of it was that there was a sheet down there. But it wasn't a sheet, it was apples.
Next question. Do you know, is that Mark's, or is that Jim's, like scaffolding and stuff that's still in the mapping room? Do you know if that's been moved out, can we start moving things, or should we still wait?
We probably need to wait just a little bit, because he's still, it's Jim's.
It's Jim's, okay.
Yes, and he wants to finish up these pieces here and move that scaffold around, and he's kinda using a ladder and scaffold. But if we can wait just a couple of weeks.
That's why I was saying, I don't want the mood of the.
Because, at that, at the same time, when, once we start moving stuff around, we can get these file cabinets out of the hallway, put into the, wherever you want them. I don't know if it's gonna be the one in your office, or in the mapping room, wherever you want, but we can get those moved, because it can, we can, begin, beginning to become an eyesore with those file cabinets out in the middle of the hallway.
Because I have to worry whether somebody's still.
Right, right, so I can ask Jim today, because he's up on third floor.
No, it's, it's no hurry, I just wanna start moving things and clean it in there, and then just have to do it all again. I'm not in a hurry, I just wanted to know whether I needed to wait or not wait.
Because, really, we can't move anything until Diane gets her desk out of there.
Yeah.
Because her desk is in there too.
Well, I mean, we can start cleaning, but not that, that's not a problem. But there's, I mean, we might as well clean before you rush stuff in somewhere.
Other than that, that's all I really have, I don't have anything else, I mean, just a few odd things, and they're kinda major, but did get word, I don't know if all the commissioners know that we have an issue with the fire alarm. We should have been, I don't know what they're gonna do about it, we'll find out. We'll find out about what they're supposed to do with the fire alarm. Other than that, that's all I know. We are well, we can know more Wednesday.
Was that part in, in the, they're supposed to do? Fire alarms in the.
This came up afterwards.
Came up afterwards, and then they made, it was in the addendum one, addendum one, but other than that, it's nowhere to be found. So, I don't know, from what I'm getting, getting, if somebody at Lucky Bill dropped the ball.
But if it's in the addendum, then they have to do it.
Addendum one, but they don't know where it's at now, it didn't go any further after addendum one. So it's either sitting on somebody's desk.
Well, we already, are you talking about change order?
Our only thing was in the change orders, they wrote it up to do it, but then they didn't do anything with it.
Oh, you mean, so it didn't go in the addendum one in the bid packets?
Correct.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm pulling you now.
No, that's fine. So, I don't know what we're gonna do, I, I don't know. All I know is that the electric, electrical side was four hundred and forty thousand dollars over what their bid price was, but that's not gonna fall back on us, because that falls back on Lucky Bill, because they subtly, or sub, subbed it out. So. Other than that, I just know that we're almost done. We can smile until the next thing comes up.
You're right.
Everyone have a good day.
Back to you.
There's one from last year, and it was to Cherokee Publishing, on County General, and everything that's this year. I don't need the office. Not our problem.
They don't like this to be nice. What's gonna be signed down here too? It's one eleven, right?
It is, one, one, one.
The big football game tonight. Yeah. You don't care?
They're gonna press Clemson to beat Alabama.
I don't think it's gonna happen.
I don't know, it's not that bad.
True. True, true, true.
So Kyle, how've you been? So, your nephew is officially unbanned from sitting with you.
Did he say, you, did he call you yucky?
No, we really worked on Kyle yucky, and we drew pictures of Kyle. And then we made you cry, and then we made you happy, and then we made you cry, and then we made you happy.
He likes to see you.
That's not the, the discussion I got from you.
Yeah.
I get some interesting text messages at the beginning.
Did I? I did.
I was gonna say, I heard you did.
I did? Didn't see it, so, okay, opportunetime.
Why didn't I?
I got a new best friend.
I did.
When I go up to the concession stand, I'm like, oh boy, you're freaking me out.
I didn't know, I heard it from secondhand, so I didn't know how much the story grew or not, so.
It was just one.
Yeah.
And then I, I sent, Troy Campbell asked me to come up and get a, take a picture of the map, you know, so he'd know where the lines were. And I sent it to Troy Shepherd, Troy Campbell, and Troy's like going, why did you send this to me? And I'm like going, because you asked me for it, and he's like going, okay, but why did I ask you for it? And I go, I don't know you asked me for it. So we had like a forty-five minute conversation before I left, and I went, oh my goodness, that's Troy Shepherd. So I sent him a text message, I'm like, I am so sorry, you should change your name, or I should put this in somewhere different. And he laughed, he thought it was funny. That's campia. He felt a little funny, I have to back this up, going, you was thoroughly convinced that I needed it, but I wasn't thoroughly not convinced of why I needed it.
Where's Troy Campbell live at?
In town.
Craig Town?
You know where the, the, like, Craig shop and the, um, he lives down that street, I think.
North?
Yeah, I think it's in the second block, I think. Nice brick house on the west side of that street.
Well, I pretty deal with town, but I didn't know where. Don't know where else to live in the country.
Yeah. I wasn't sure if he had moved, so when he come in, I was asking him, you know where I live, I don't even know whether maybe you got tired of town, might have been, I don't know somewhere else. But I mean, they've done a lot of remodeling on that house I knew earlier, but, okay, I still live there.
The Craig funeral?
Huge. They didn't go, you know, to the cemetery. And so, when I walked in, Cheryl and Tom Thorpe walked in afterwards, and so I went, I'm just upset with you guys, and so well, then they come back, by that time, they had room for me upstairs, just me, and I didn't know who was by, so I said, no, it's up to them, so they ushered us downstairs into the basement. And then they come down and said, oh, we have enough room for you guys, come back upstairs, the basement was full also. And, or they asked us if we wanted to, since we were the first ones downstairs, and we wanted to go upstairs, and Cheryl looks at me, and I'm like, I don't, I don't know. So we went on upstairs, well then, they ushered the, everybody else through the family, well, they started at the back of the church, or the front of the church, and so Tom's like going, thanks, I'll need it. We'd have been downstairs, we'd have been downstairs. They didn't get out of there until almost four o'clock.
Really?
It was huge, lots of people. Casey got up and talked, and did, all the grandkids did their favorite memory of their grandpa, and Casey got up and read him, I don't know how he did it. He had a hard time on couples, he did really good job.
He had a pretty good deal on Facebook about a crank phone.
And Kim Metcalf, I guess Cecil had talked to him a while back before Justin Mary passed away, and said he wanted him to talk about the scout part. So Kim Metcalf did a really good job on telling everybody they had done the scouts. He was a, what do they call it, silver beaver?
Something like that.
Which is like the highest that they can be without applying for that honor. That was kinda neat.
Just glad Arvin called off the cemetery deal. Kai Pierce, is that who the gal Fairborn hires, not there no more?
She is no longer there.
Kai Pierce.
As soon as I get her resignation, I will put it on the agenda also. I thought you were doing like really good, or angels. Toby texts me if you want me to come in Thursday, but if I don't pick him up.
Oh. Why? Well, Toby and I, so Toby and I can handle it.
I don't.
Don't care you wanna vote, don't worry about it.
Was offering, no, I'm coming to vote, I was just offering my services if you really wanted.
But you can't vote.
So what?
So then you can't vote. You just wanna come out and play with the babies, what you wanna do.
Yeah, no, I actually won't play with Riley, she's more my, that little bit breakable, and she'll like to argue back with me, and that's why I like it. She really doesn't argue back, she just tells you how it is, and so.
Riley at the school. And they probably go. Very nice.
It's like a backdoor.
Yep. Got her swing there, Riley shot you with her. So I told her, you have a new hire, she gotta get that on.
I don't, but her own, I put her own drive on. Her Thursday, her bed was, she went to the doctor's.
And they didn't have to introduce that, all right? I know she wouldn't be, she can't stand to stay home that long.
Now Shannon maybe knows the mesh she put her in, you think about?
No, we didn't really have much of a big mess there.
Didn't skip a beat.
We used to do ourselves a nail. Now we're feeling like we'll figure out her filing, she's a system a little different. She don't know where ABC is or whatever, but I can get it done.
Maybe you guys don't know very much. That'll be done this afternoon.
Tuesday the whole day?
Yeah.
I'll try.
You and Tony, you go on the same tour? Gates? Including birthday on the drive.
She was very well known. I and brothers come to Gates, they won't see me anymore.
Check what?
You're at Coop. I heard it's more of Tony that said he's like for funerals, actually. Somebody said it, that's just.
Thank you, Chad.
Um, John, Cutwright's wife is not doing good at all. She's up in the hospital, and she's been there for a while with her respiratory disorders.
Huh, what's?
But she was in the hospital, and she came home, and then she went back the next day, and she's been ever since, and he called us last night and said that she's not doing very good.
That's Kathy Carter, what do you have?
Oh, really, I didn't know this was so married.
Yeah.
Oh my God, she's.
Well, she's gotta figure that out there, yeah. What Jerry had said.
I did not know that, I didn't know where she lived until I was campaigning, and I rang the doorbell, and she come to the door, and I go, oh my gosh, I knew you. Um, remember Dale Summers? He passed away yesterday. I seen Jimmy and me, she was coming into emergency room as I was trying to go pull the vehicle around.
Yeah, Dale's wife, my sister, we're pretty good friends.
And I seen him visit that.
Well, I know nothing wrong with Kathy Cutter, right?
Well, she did come in and done some fighting and stuff, I just can't believe them, but two and two together with their mom's name. I was probably yakking, and didn't think anything else was going on.
Well, older censors, though. Don't have any hair, because they're cancer treatment.
Who's that?
Where'd you, uh, Gaines Mike's, Linda Gaines.
Do I know her?
Married to Jerry Gaines. Probably not, because, you know, Virginia's the youngest, I can't remember, well, she'd be like sixty-four, something like that right now.
But I just thought it was just two girls, whether it was three girls.
Three girls. They had Kathy and Virginia. Yeah, glad it, well, we didn't need another runner Carter. Well, that was in the roster.
Well, he had said a long time ago, when he had come in and done some changes on his insurance, that she had, had, had trouble with her eyes.
She has trouble with her eyes, she has TV, she has respiratory disorders, left and right. Yeah.
But I said, I never even put two and two together.
She has TV, she has tuberculosis.
Okay.
They only sit way out in front yard, just Gaines' house, that Kathy, her, living.
Oh, they live there now? I was, um, when I was campaigning, I went there, and he asked who I was, and I didn't know who that guy was that lived there. And we had a chit chat, and he said and told me who he was, but I assumed he had been related to the Gaines somehow, because I was in their house.
He never missed.
They were having a get together.
He never missed a day of high school, K through twelve, never missed a day of college. Dan is very proud of that.
Party and saying, you gotta get out, and stack a bunch, yeah.
Use about the max days you can, and it's like, that's why you're giving a certain amount of days. Who knows?
It's because eight o'clock classes, I don't get that very.
Yeah, that's why I never signed up for eight o'clock classes.
Another eight o'clock class this time, and then her next class is eleven, and I'm like going, child? I'm a hobbyist, advisor, he just keeps doing it to me.
I had a whole semester where Monday through Friday were eight a.m., and I was like, I will never do this again.
Or Tuesday, Thursday.
Where I work at seven o'clock in the morning, aren't we?
Or Tuesday, Thursday.
Eight sounds like, man, yeah.
Friday are eight.
My first semester, my only thing on Tuesday and Thursday was a Tuesday class at twelve fifteen. Nothing on Thursday.
You've already fed out two hundred cattle by then.
I had eight o'clock every morning, my goal was to have everything done by noon, whatever day.
My goal was to have everything done by noon, but I have no idea any of the classes.
If not noon, be done by one or two.
Let's do the long, the long stuff, finally, before you guys left and stuff for the Jamal that just did. She called, and I had gone, she wanted to know where he was at, and I called him, he was on his way.
Oh, yeah, they were pouring out of Burlington when she was heading home.
Oh, it doesn't mark linked though, but it, the highlight is on, I'm sorry, that's my fault, I just seen the highlight.
That's my goal today is to go back and work on stupid fuel.
What, no, I'm sorry.
Out of Brooklyn. Some of the grimming game.
I didn't actually go.
You didn't go?
No, I didn't, I didn't have to, I was covering the game, I'm like, yeah. On Saturday.
I had known that, parked in your driveway just to.
Uh, what did you tow at your expense?
I've been safe for a while, it took me a while from the beginning.
I would've towed you myself.
Just done bang, bang, back into turn two.
I didn't do that. We didn't wanna hurt my car. Just for you, I'll take all your tires off.
You, you'd be doing more work than you wanted.
Well, my guy's got a compressor, I could just.
No, I mean, I mean, yeah, it was just, you're not very good, I need to get, that's my ambition, so.
I would put a, put a car mid into a scavenger hunt. Should've ridden, hunted, it was cold, and you, and you would head along. Cause obviously you couldn't drive the car.
I surely could've bribed somebody to be my friend for a while. I had three that I could bribe really easily, thought that they were needing me to be my friend, but I didn't need them to be my friend. Child's friends and.
I have no friends.
After this weather, they have less, right?
Yep. I move for the approval, second.
All in favor? Aye.
District two.
General government.
Find another copy of the book, there's an extra copy if you want. Someone must do what, I mean, we said.
I could've, you want for, um, five, I think, because what if they're going for?
So, I can just, and one of them was newer additions, I'll just take my little girl one down. I move for the approval, second. All in favor? Aye. Road crossing permits.
You want me to order you one? I will order it for you and tell it to you.
Two hundred and five dollars.
I tried. At fifty cents, not that we're trying, uh, at profit. Dang it, man.
I move for the approval.
Second.
Month day officer's appointment.
Bring my stamper over, it's in my top right hand drawer, thank you, man. I'm sorry, who did what?
I moved, actually, second, right. W N S.
Oh, just excuse me, thank you. Thank you, sorry. I changed your name to Willie Walker, and he's just Walker, his is W. K, and yours is just W.
Okay, I'll do that. I'm ready to change my name.
His name is Chad Loach. Loach, there you go. Good one, thank you.
Probably don't call him real clip.
Thank you, I'm sorry, I'm absent minded. Thank you. They are, they take care of me all the time, they're such dedicated employees. That whole thing was just, a lot of good things.
I move for the approval. Second, all in favor? Aye. Lucky Bill payment, forty-seven thousand, three hundred and forty dollars and ninety cents.
Here's the copy of the payment, and here's the copy of, um.
They have thirty cents, excuse me.
He's saying that they had done that, so, and I'm sorry, I was kinda ready to tell, but you know how much we had left on, and I. I know, I know, very good. I think it's like a hundred and ninety-four dollars if we had left, no, you don't lose that, and acknowledge it and give it up, motion out.
I move for the approval. Second. All in favor? By the results of Fairbord.
Oh, I'm so sorry, can we do, go back on my officer?
Okay.
They blew out my thing, I'm so sorry, that was my fault. Just go for them.
Yeah, uh, what, the motion.
I'm sorry, been on together.
Now, we're in the filing period. Our final results, Fairbord District one, two, and three, for the next election.
I was gonna have the resolution on there, and I decided we better not, since it's just in case, and we did have one, so, I will have the resolution on there next week, but I just wanna let you guys know, no one filed, other than David Bales on District one. No one filed other than Nikki Wyatt on District two, and we'll have an election.
Yeah.
On Thursday in District three between Troy Campbell and Ryan Thomas.
From eight thirty to six thirty, right?
Eight thirty, six thirty. I put it in the paper, uh, Jackie paper, and I also put it in the newsprint. And I, I guess, will take things around, will not be today, I will try to take things to the, all.
That's the candidate's responsibility, yeah.
Do you want me to take it to the businesses then? I mean, she just, they made that statement and the thing, that's up to you guys, not me.
I don't know that worry about, I wouldn't worry about it either.
One less thing I have to do.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Well, that's their deal, if they wanna, they can go out and talk and whatever.
Okay, I will do it, thank you very much.
Five percent business. I make the motion adjourned.
Second.
All in favor?